Okay, I'd like to call the Monday, February 7th, regular Sonora City Council meeting to order at 5:02 PM. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance and Jim, would you mind leading the Pledge of Allegiance for us, please?
Okay, ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Garaventa. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer.
Here.
Councilmember Satch.
Here.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Here.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Here.
Okay, all of us are here tonight? And everybody can hear me, correct? Just making sure. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Um, city clerks, report on agenda posting.
The agenda was posted on Thursday, February 3rd at 3 o'clock PM.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda, I've had one thing brought to my attention for on the new unfinished business, new business, item number seven, um, was to consider the assignment of the mayor's appointment to the countywide homeless task force to be brought at the beginning of new business. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Who? Okay. Um, so after the approval of agendas presentations, uh, receive a Toowomi County update from District One Supervisor David Goldenberg.
Yeah. So, good evening, Mayor, council members. You know, not that much had been going on overall, you know, within the county system. Uh, as we've seen, Omicron has been tapering off, which, you know, everybody's thankful for. Um, you know, we still had quite a few cases over the weekend. Uh, 300 active cases, you know, per today's report. Eleven in the hospital, uh, as of today, and 163 deaths, and that's really the unfortunate, you know, side of this is, uh, you know, even in the last two and a half weeks, we've had eight deaths. So, you know, just brief report, that's not unexpected. You know, our health officer, interim health officer, Dr. Exjankko, you know, indicated that this was the path that we were looking at, and I truly hope that it does stay that way. Um, other than that, some stuff on the county side, the Fire Safety Advisory Committee, we are working very hard on trying to develop and implement vegetation ordinance. Chief New, thank you very much, has been integral and a, and a big part of the process. We've had three public meetings so far, and we're looking to have three more. Uh, the three meetings that we've had to date were, were more general, you know, just for out there for anybody, uh, but we're going to try to get a little bit more district specific. So Supervisor Brandon and I will probably do a joint one for Districts One and Five. Supervisor Half and I will do the same for Districts, uh, One and, uh, Four. And then it looks like, uh, we should have Supervisors Kirk and Campbell doing one, uh, you know, kind of the uphill areas for Districts Two and Three. Um, we're getting close, uh, you know, we wanna, we're, we're modeling a lot of this, uh, not only after what the city has in an ordinance, uh, but about eight other counties, and, and we're, you know, still massaging all of this, so. Um, other than that, the county has got a busy week this week. Uh, planned, we've, we've got a board meeting tomorrow, and then we've got board workshop, you know, planned for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. So we're going to meet as supervisors, uh, on Wednesday. Um, Thursday, we're going to meet, uh, with all the department heads. And then Friday, we're really looking at doing a goal setting and setting our priorities for, for this year. And we're a little bit behind on the curve here, but, uh, we'll, we'll get there. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else right now, but I'm welcome to take your questions. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'll talk to that later, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I, I just wondered when you thought the fire safety, um, public meetings might be for District One and, and Five, or One and Four?
Right, we, we do not have them scheduled yet. Uh, you know, we're trying to coordinate the efforts and the more data that we can bring in, uh, to provide, because a lot of people are asking for a draft of, of the ordinance, and we're not quite there yet, because we've been examining all these other efforts and, and taking input. Uh, also looking to meet with the Farm Bureau separately, we had some discussions about that today, because they've, you know, got some concerns due to the size of their parcels and the impact, you know, that they could. So they're not scheduled yet, but I anticipate within the next week, uh, we should have them scheduled.
Well, um, will we be able to integrate them with the Fire Safe Neighborhoods? That program?
Um, the meeting itself?
No, just, I mean, you know, the, the programming and, and the principles, I guess, is.
All, all of these, I mean, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm one of two board members, you know, myself and Supervisor Campbell on the Fire Safe Advisory Committee, and, and we're looking at all avenues constantly, you know, where initially, we hoped to, uh, look at getting an ordinance in place by the first of April. But I think it was a little bit too ambitious, you know, just, you know, trying to gather all the information. But I think we're, we're more realistically looking at trying to get it in place by, by May 1st.
Great, okay, thank you. That was my question as well, so.
Okay.
But thanks.
Anybody else that I can answer?
Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity again to speak, always a pleasure to be here.
I really appreciate it, and like I said, uh, I was telling you earlier, a lot of our constituents have been very positive on the, uh, the amount of listening that you're doing for District One and our city, so thank you.
Very good, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, um, public comment on non-agenda items, this is any item on, not, that is not on the agenda. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation in this. Oh, yeah, I was, I was going to you, Doug. Sorry, I thought I messed up, said something, okay. So, my, my wife is here in the audience, so it's throwing me off tonight, too, so. Um, so yes, uh, before we do the public comment to the, um, anyone else that's in here or on Zoom, um, I wanted to call on our city attorney, if we may.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just wanted to let you know that approximately 3 o'clock today, uh, due to the, uh, decreased rate of, uh, Omicron, which has gone down by 65%, um, the governor has announced that, um, he's going to let the mask, indoor mask mandate, um, it laps on the 15th, so this would be our last meeting with that requirement in place. We still would be subject to, uh, the requirement, depending on what county health says, and, and honestly, one of the major reasons we had the mask mandate in, uh, place in the first place is because it's required by our insurance. But it, I, I'm, um, based off of this information, I would expect all those mandates to go away and be effective on the 15th. So if that's the case, then this would be our last meeting with that in place. So just kind of wanted to let you go, it is part of the strategy of moving from the pandemic to endemic, endemic strategy, uh, and expecting that, uh, COVID in some form or another will be with us for some time. So, you know, with that, I just wanted to kind of have that and kind of, uh, put this in, in context, since this is, uh, just a couple hours old, so.
So, thank you. Okay, looking for any way, way I'm going to do this with, uh, public comment and then any other agenda items, I'll start on the members of the public that are in, uh, the council chambers at first, and then we will go to the Zoom meeting, so. Are there any members of the public in here? I have no idea who this lady is.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and council members, Katie Dunn, the President of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce. Um, I'm here tonight to share with you a survey that I did with downtown Sonora. So after Christmas Town, um, I took it upon myself to put together a survey to ask the local businesses and merchants what they felt, um, if they felt that Christmas Town brought them more business. What was their favorite thing about Christmas Town? What can we do better? You know, do they have any ideas for other holiday festivities that could enhance Christmas Town? And it was really well received and, um, got a lot of great feedback, and honestly, I think really the reason for doing this is to really reach out to them and let them know that this is a community project, and that, you know, if we all link arms, it will get better and better every year. Primarily, they said that it was the best Christmas ever, of course, the Rad Card had something to do with that. Um, but one business said it was the best month she's ever had in 31 years, and she did not do the Rad Card, so that was pretty awesome. Uh, I think their most favorite thing about Christmas Town was Christmas Tree Lane. She, they love seeing everyone participate and the community getting together to decorate, um, and that it was a collective community project. Uh, what can we do better? Um, more decorations, more lights, more participation from the merchants, uh, more family-friendly outdoor activities, vendors selling hot cider and cocoa on the streets, uh, carolers, I mean, there's a lot. Um, and it was really great, because I can now bring this back to our Christmas Town Committee and let them know this is, this is the feedback that we got from the downtown. So I wanted to share that with you. How many more minutes? Okay, good. So, okay, I would just want to make sure I have enough time. Um, now I'm going to put on a different hat. Um, I'm also the President of the Board for Visit Toowomi County. And I want to share a couple things with you about, uh, Visit Toowomi County. First off, and this has to do with Christmas Town, actually, is that in December, uh, Visit California actually picked up Christmas Town Sonora and ran with it. So I'm really excited to be able to share that with you, because that's huge for Visit California to do that. And then also, Visit, um, Toowomi County, they, um, hired this company Maiden Voyage. And basically what it is, is they provide a platform that provides multiple areas of intelligence by using, um, ge- geotractors, trackers based on cellphone data. And so they're able to, um, identify top origin markets, visitors' average length of stay, most popular locations, repeat visitations, and opportunity markets. And in the month of December, downtown Sonora was number one, followed by Yosemite. Is that amazing, or what? Yeah, yay! Um, just know that it's, it's, it's important to point out that the data that they receive only reflects a snapshot of the visitor's devices, because not everybody has their phone on, or they don't have a, um, the location data enabled on their phone. But it is, um, enough data that they feel gives a, a really good representation, so I wanted to share that with you guys, so. Yeah, yay, yay us!
Thank you. Okay. And anyone that's in the council chambers, anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Derek Nunes. As you all should know, I recently filed the Public Records Act request with the City of Sonora. After failing to respond within the 10-day requirement, I was told that the city would need more time to fulfill my request. After inquiring as to why more time was needed, within less than an hour, I was told that there were no further records. My request, as you all know, was in regards to a previous email I had sent the council regarding hiring an interim city administrator. I'm disappointed to say that my request seemingly showed that the city council took no effort to follow up with my email before hiring someone at a salary of $140,000 a year. Mayor Hawkins, you never responded to my email, but we did speak briefly on the phone. I expressed my concerns about Ms. Eads with you, and I would hardly call them good. Yet during the last council meeting, you stated to the public that you had only heard good things about her. You also said that no one was picked automatically, and that you wanted to make sure it was kept professional, non-buddy-like. I can only imagine, uh, that those remarks were in regards to the familiarity with the city attorney, as no one else had publicly questioned otherwise. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, you also never responded to my email. You did, however, stop by my business to speak with me. Uh, the major sentiment I received from our conversation was that the city hired, had to hire somebody. That is very disappointing to hear when we're paying this person $140,000 a year, and the City of Sonora only interviewed four candidates. Councilmember Sagerstrom, uh, you responded to my email. In it, you told me that the avenues I suggested were unexplored, did receive attention from the council. I have attempted reaching out to the individual city council members and department heads in Angels Camp, but I am still awaiting responses from most. I did get a confirmation that White Brenner did reach out to one of them for a recommendation in relation to my email. I found that interesting, as there were no disclosures to my Public Records Act request of my email being shared with White Brenner. I also find it concerning, as the White Brenner firm was acting as the interim city administrator for Angels Camp at that time. Councilmembers Garaventa and Satch, you both never bothered to reply to my email at all. Uh, none of the city council members here took the time to forward my email along, or to look further into it, according to my records request as well. My biggest concern tonight, however, is in regards with the city attorney, Mr. White, who by his own admission has a conflict of interest, as he is the attorney for Angels Camp, where he worked closely with Ms. Eads. It seemed it would have been proper for him to recuse himself in this situation. Instead, he's been instrumental in her hiring. He not only gave a personal recommendation, but gathered other recommendations from people he knew would endorse her. Mr. White then proceeded to avoid my questions during the last council meeting, until I reminded council they had not yet answered my questions, at which point he could not answer many of them due to his conflict of interest. Finally, Mr. White shared details about my wife and her place of employment, which seems like a violation of her privacy, especially due to his conflict of interest. I would be curious to know how he even had such information at hand, as my wife and I have different last names, and neither of us have ever showed, shared those details personally with him. While on that subject, I do want to make it clear, my concerns and inquiries are mine alone and do not pertain to my wife. While she does support my endeavors, I am unsure why Mr. White brought her into this during the last meeting. Regardless, it seems hardly to be standard decorum for a council meeting. As her husband, I do hear about her problems at work. I encouraged my wife many times to leave her job in Angels Camp, but she has stayed on because she enjoys the work and her coworkers. Over the last three years, though, I have observed the high turnover in her office under Ms. Eads, where every employee except my wife has left. There is also the ongoing lawsuit I previously mentioned, as well as budgeting problems. Ms. Eads seemed to struggle to manage the smaller city of Angels Camp, and I fail to understand how she'll be equipped to handle our larger city. While my opinion isn't really important, what is important here is the need for transparency and honesty in government. Unfortunately, both seem to be lacking in this case. I would like to end by asking the same question I asked without answer from the council last session. Mayor Hawkins, Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, uh, Councilmember Garaventa, Councilmember Satch, and Councilmember Sagerstrom, before or after receiving my email advising you to reach out to Angels Camp, city council, and department heads, did you do so, or did you direct staff, other than the city attorney, to contact them with the purpose of judging Ms. Eads' performance while she was employed as city administrator there? Thank you.
Thank you, and just for the public's record, uh, the council is not allowed to, uh, respond to any, um, a public comment on non-agenda items, so. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we will look to the Zoom and see if.
Oh, sorry, you're done.
Oh. Okay. I don't see anyone raised hands or star nine. So.
We have.
Oh. Uh, Tristan Sali- uh, Salida.
Salida.
Yeah. Salida.
Salida, please.
That works for me. Okay, go ahead, Tristan.
Yes, I, I guess you all know, I'm a, a non-member participant in the Social Equity Committee, the Sonora Social Equity Committee. In that process of doing that, I have, I believe, discovered something, and I see it manifest throughout the city, as a matter of fact, throughout the county. Uh, an unwillingness to acknowledge the hidden history of California that distorts the history we live with. It, I'm not trying to say that the history we live with isn't right or exists. I'm saying there's a, another history that nobody's talking about or hiding that makes the whole thing very camouflage, and I think it leads to a lot of the confusion that's happening right now, people being disoriented. In 1851, the President, Millip Fillmore, he, he sent off some people here to do treaties with the Indians in California. And 18 of the 20 tribes, uh, acquiesced, when the gun was put to their head, uh, they caved, they bought into it, they accepted a reservation, and they accepted, uh, you know, limited opportunity to participate in reality. 18 of them, including the Central Sierra Mewoc, who are now represented by the Chicken Wrench Band, and, uh, the Toowomi Band. There was, uh, uh, and those treaties then were sent to the, to the US Senate, and they disappeared. And they were, they were taken, and they were hidden in secret until 1905. The year after that happened, the official bid for extermination of the natives began. And that continued for 50 years, and it went on, you know, it went on. In 1905, uh, the, the treaties were unhid, but simul, you know, the next year, the the army went into Yosemite and destroyed the villages that were popping up again. As well, you know, during that time also, there, there were two tribes that, that didn't capitulate, that didn't cave in. And, uh, they were eradicated, they were just exterminated. The Chavchilla and the Awonichi. Uh, there's nothing that can be done, this is history, there's nothing can be done about it, but it is history. And it has to be included the same way that, uh, the other history is.
Okay, I think that was it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, uh, star nine or raise your hand function? Okay, I don't see anyone else. So we will move on.
Mayor, can I address a couple of the things that came up?
Uh, I, sure.
Yep, so just to answer some of the questions that came up, so, um, we can't take any action, so. Uh, in response to Mr. Nunes, because I made a list of the things that he kind of made accusations regarding. So the 10-day requirement related to the PRA has only to do with, um, a response as to how long it's going to take to get the information, it doesn't actually require you to provide the information within 10 days, it only tells you how long, uh, you have to disclose within, then how long it's going to take you to give it, but irrespective, I think we were very close to providing him the information, um, within that 10, that 10-day requirement, as, uh, many of our council members can attest to, because when we got his email saying, hey, where's my information, I called a couple of them, got the final information, which is how he got his, his email on that one day. Um, the second thing is the e- email shared with White Brenner, uh, we, we provided that to him as a courtesy copy. Uh, the public is not entitled to attorney-client privileged information, your communications with me as your attorney um, are, are confidential, and they aren't subject to PRA, but in the, a complete abundance of, you know, to be very transparent about it, um, we actually provided him that information. And so if anything, we've been more transparent by disclosing more things than we're, we're required to, because those were all the records that exist. Um, as it relates to my Angels Camp involvement, whether or not a conflict of interest existed, um, uh, my involvement, including my recommendations, had been disclosed to the Angels Camp City Council. Uh, it was discussed, and, uh, they had no objection to, to my, my involvement, so. Uh, the Angels Camp City Council is very aware of what I've said and my involvement, um, in this, and, uh, it was, it, the, I've not been made aware of any objections, and I've talked with them about it multiple times. Um, and then, um, lastly, you know, as it relates to kind of the, you know, the confines of where, uh, that you are under as well as me, um, there's confidential, personal, human, uh, resources information that we're not allowed to talk to. Um, it was, it's, uh, some of the concerns about some of the accusations Mr. Nunes had made previously uh, could only be known by somebody who was working, uh, or have privy to information that would, that'd be human resources information within, uh, confines of Angels Camp. Um, and so that's, you know, you know, I can't talk about that, and I, and I haven't talked about that. Um, other, other than just saying, you know, I can't talk about stuff that was directly related to his wife, because I happen to know who, who he is. Um, and that remains the case there. I, I will say that his wife is a very valued employee in Angels Camp. Uh, she's played a critical role in there, and, um, I don't think his remarks reflect at all on her. So, you know, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, unless the council has any, I, I have none. Yeah. So, so, wait. Let, let's try to move, any other questions, let's either have them sent to you, Doug, as, as an email, whether it's from Derek. With the way the public comment goes, I don't want to get myself in trouble with the public or anything else. I completely, and I, yeah.
So, so let me be very clear, conflicts of interest are between the attorney and the city council. They're not to the general public, they're not to specific individuals who, who have an agenda one way or the other. They are between the attorneys and the city council. That was done in Angels Camp, and it was done in Sonora. End of story.
Okay, so, yeah, if there's, if there's any other questions like that, I would encourage any members of the public to, they could send me an email, I'll forward it to Doug, um, and then, and then we can go from there, so. Okay, um, Doug, did you have any, anything else to add? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Um, on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered routine, and we voted on in one motion, unless council member or member of the public, uh, has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar, considered separately. I'll just read them off. Approval of dispersments in the amount of $154,381.93 for payroll inclusive in employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions, holiday pay, and other adjustments, including retro pay. And then the Sonora Fire Department electronically submitted a Federal Emergency Management Agency grant, say that real fast, um, for staffing and adequate fire and emergency response, Safer. The city administrator and/or fire chief is requesting to authorize and direct the fire chief to return to the city council with application results and to accept the awards if successful. Councilmembers have any questions on this?
Yeah, actually, I do. Um, item three and item six seem to be the same, they're very close. Um, I'm wondering if, um, it'd be wise to pull item three and put it together with item six, or are they, are they not the same?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, so two different programs?
Okay, but it's. And they are both for Safer?
No, the number three is for Safer.
Okay. Oh, because I, in the, in the, in the backup. Okay, well, also the, uh, on item six, it also mentions the Safer Grant on the backup material.
Oh.
Okay, so that's, that's why it looked the same thing. So they're two different things.
There are two different grants.
Okay.
Uh, one was due on 4th of February, Safer.
Uh huh.
So that needs to be submitted to the council.
Sure.
So it's basically, um, again, there was no cost on that grant, so help Safer bring that forward to the city.
Safer to bring the Safer.
The second one, I'm sorry, is for prevention if you want.
Okay.
So I apologize if there's, um,
Okay. Okay. No, that's right.
Chief New, there, there's no more mistakes the rest of this month, okay? None, no more.
I might have done that, when it was in the agenda software, so. No, my mistake, probably, you know, probably my mistake, I was working on a lot of grants.
Thank you. Okay. So are there any other council questions then? Okay, then I'll ask for public comment. Okay, then I'll ask for public comment. Is any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, I see none in the public that is in council chambers, is there any over Zoom? I see none over Zoom, okay, so I'll bring it back to the council.
I'd like to move on to approve the consent calendar. Second.
Motion by council member Garavenna, second by Mayor Protem Plummer. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any knows, any abstentions, passes five to zero. That's what I'm saying. Okay, unfinished business, new business, we're going to call item number seven, consider the assignment of the mayor's appointment to the countywide homeless task force. City administrator, did you want to say anything?
Thank you, I would just ask at this time that you consider this item in discussion and staff is here to answer any questions that you might have about the item.
So I was contacted by council members such about this, what, a week and a half ago, something?
Sometime.
Yeah, so did you want to make any comments?
Well, I just. I, I think as, as everyone knows, two. City, there are two city representatives on the Tooluma County Commission on Homelessness. It's, they're typically elected officials. But. Mary Rose, I'm, I'm on it, and Mary Rose Rudy Congo was also on it. And so she has left and so I contacted Supervisor Goldenberg about the process to appoint. I didn't know if that came from the board of supervisors or if that came from the council and you. So. Just in kind of. You know, thinking about it and I'm certainly well open for discussion. I would recommend Chief Vander Will for that position, I think he, he. He and his department are the first line. Working with the homeless population, they are the ones who, who really know that population and. I think could just bring a lot of valuable information. And be a huge asset to this commission. So that would be my recommendation and, you know. But certainly I'm open for discussion about it.
Did any other council members want to make any comments before I talk about it? Mark, you look lost, but you look like you want to say something.
I'm sorry, thank you. At least I'm not humming. No, I think, I think Chief Vander Will is an excellent choice and brings a unique perspective and. The real world experience that almost none of us have. In trying to work with the homeless and we know that he has a big heart and. Wants to help in any way, so I, I thoroughly support it. Think it's an excellent decision and maybe that explains why he's not in uniform and instead in a sport coat.
Councilmember Segastrom?
Just thought it might be wise to ask Chief Vander Will what he, whether he could fit it into his already rather packed schedule. I mean, he is, it, it would be great and he also probably knows all of the community development aspects about where homeless can camp and not.
So I.
I can't imagine that Colette would suggest him without having approached him, so.
So. I actually had, I actually had a conversation with Chief Vander Will the other day and I'll let him basically say, but. I don't think there's anyone else that's better suited, because again. Not only do you know all the laws or most of the laws, but you know the people really, really well. And we appreciate all of your service, so.
Thank you, uh, yeah, you know, I, obviously the, the schedule and I talked to councilwoman such about it and I can fit it in the schedule. You know, it, it's, it's, you know, at the top of my head, no one needs another meeting, right, but this is a very important topic. And, and it, it impacts, the police department impacts the city, it impacts the community on a daily basis. And, and like I think was alluded to up here. You know, the, the level of interaction that law enforcement has with the homeless community, I think gives me a, a position to have a, a. Bring a perspective to the board that can be very constructive moving forward and, and, you know, I, I hope I can do that and represent the city's best interests, the homeless council members such. And if I can't, then, you know, I, I hope someone tells me and we, we would address that.
That's great. Well, thank you, yeah, that, I mean, that's who I would have recommended, I remember when we did our. City-county joint meeting back in December, I remember Sheriff Pooley. Bringing that up about how law enforcement needed to be involved, so I, I think everything is just comes together and works very well, so I. Again, I can't thank you enough for your service, not just in wanting to do this, but your service to the city as a whole, like. You're a really, really valued member.
Thank you.
Oh, councilwoman such.
I just want to add, want to add that law enforcement, it ha- does have. A position as an advisory member of the commission, but I just think Chief Vander Will is, has the perfect temperament. And interest and into, kind of the thoughts to really speed, to help this commission. So having, having you have a seat at the table, I think is really important, so. Welcome, thank you. Don't, don't sign up for any ad hoc committees.
Excellent, so. Any other questions? Okay, so then I will ask for a public comment that is in the city council chambers, any public comment? Uh-oh, this guy.
So a couple of things. One, I wholeheartedly support Chief Vander Will. You know, joining the commission, I was newly appointed to it. Just as a matter of, you know, technicality, used to be a homeless task force. But now it's a commission on homelessness, so you may want to just, you know, adjust your records to reflect that. So I just got appointed to it and as Mayor Hawkins said, we, we had our meeting. And agreed that we needed law enforcement presence. And, and so I'm very, you know, glad to see this. The only other thing and I. It's, it's a little bit separate from this, but, you know, councilwoman such. And I have been discussing and we're going to make a little trip down to Merced County. In about a week and we're going to. Visit a navigation center down there and a couple of shelters. So I hope that we'll be able to bring back more information to help the commission. So thank you very much and. Pleased to have you come aboard.
Okay, anyone else in the audience here? Oh. Michelle.
I just want to say from a staff perspective that this is a wonderful selection. And we are always in the background to help whenever you need, but I think this is the perfect person to serve on that commission. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then we will look to the Zoom, it looks like there is a Christina Welch.
Yes, hi, so grateful that you folks are taking this up. I'm Christina Welch, I'm a member of the public here, but I'm also chair of the homelessness commission. So I, I wanted to just mention a couple of things. We are really, really grateful for the contribution of Colette Such and Mary Rose. Both of them have just brought so much great connection into our commission so far and so sorry to see Mary Rose go, I look forward to. Whoever you select after that, I just wanted to clarify, just as Colette did, that this position represents the city. We do have ex officio members who are part of our commission and speak to their area of expertise and that includes law enforcement. We've been delighted to have Chief Turo and Lieutenant Hanala come and talk to us last month. But what we're looking for in this position is representing the city, I have no doubt Chief Turo. Will do a beautiful job, but I just want to clarify that this is representing the city, law enforcement has its own ex officio spot on our commission. I look forward to whoever you select, wonderful commission, I would just say, Chief Vander Will, if you do get this, don't listen to Colette about not being on an ad hoc committee. That those do a whole bunch of work, so thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, thank you, Ms. Welch. Okay, um, and I will bring it back to the council. I guess it's a, it's a.
I, we're gonna have a little more discussion perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, whatever the council wants to do, but I, that's definitely would be my approach.
First wanted to thank Colette for her open mindedness about it and choice in, in where you looked and. And to thank Chief Vander Will for being willing to step up, because every one of these. Extra meetings is another burden and fortunately you've got broad shoulders, but thank you very much, both of you.
Yeah, did I, anyone else want to say anything?
Well, I, I just want to say that I kind of jumped the gun by just like, you know, I think it's a council member vote discussion, so. Just want to acknowledge that I did do that, sorry.
Okay. So since this is a mayor oil appointment and this is kind of out of the, so is, does it still take a nomination? I mean, not a, not a, a first and a second, yeah.
Yeah, we still need a ratification vote, so I'd make your nomination and then we look for.
Yeah, so I nominate our great chief and looking for, I guess, a first and a second.
So move to approve.
Second. That was fast, okay, so motion by council member Garavenna, second by Mayor Protem Plummer, I think a third by council member Such. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any knows, any abstentions, passes five to zero, thank you to the council. Okay, true, you're free to go. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business, new business, item number four, consideration to adopt resolution number two, seven. Twenty twenty-two A approving the. Miranda memorandum of understanding for the Sonora Management Employees Association, SMEA. Effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Melissa.
No. So, uh, mayor and council, it is distinct pleasure to bring you this memorandum of understanding. With the Sonora Management Employees Association that would take their contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Some of the highlights of this agreement is it would reinstate a step F for all employees in SMEA, which is the acronym for that group. It would increase the cell phone allowance from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars a month. But it would also buy ultimate contract and have the, have these folks playing twenty percent towards their medical monthly premium costs. So I will say that, you know, I have the distinction of being able to, as it been brought up tonight, travel to different cities and, and work with different councils and you have. Without question, some of the best managements and, and some of the, the best stability of any of the cities that we have the pleasure of, of representing. And so again, I think you have a, a great agreement that would provide, would have, provide continued stability through twenty twenty-five here. With that, happy to answer any questions that you got.
Okay, looking for any questions? I see no questions. Okay, looking for any public comment on this, any public comment in here? Okay, looking for any on Zoom, any on Zoom? I see none on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the council for a motion second or any other discussion. Councilmember Such.
I have a couple of questions, I just have had a sort of a legal question and I know that, you know, I have absolutely no legal experience. But on page five of the MOU. Two D. And it's dealing with the steps, the steps in each salary range and D's. Well, if we start at two C, to achieve the sixth step, which is the F step that you just referred to. The employee must have worked for three years with the city of Sonora and a minimum of five years with another government or tribal agency for a total of eight years' experience. And then two D says, no other conditions will be necessary for members of SMEA to achieve the sixth or the step F. And. And then if you go down to. Number three and number four, it seems like that they contradict each other to me a little bit. Number three, in any case whereby reason of unusual circumstances, rigid, rigid adherence foregoing principles relating to salary adjustments would. Cause a manifest injustice, the city council may make such order relating thereto as in its direction is proper. No advance in steps shall be automatic upon completion of the period service outlined here and above. So I, I just felt like those contradicted. No, you know, and again, two D, no other conditions will be necessary for members of SMEA to achieve the sixth step.
Five.
It's fourteen. So. I don't believe that there's a conflict and, and, and the reason being is when you go to. Two and you kind of walk, you kind of walk through there, it just, it, it tells you how to, how to get to. Step F. And when you get down to, and I don't think three so much the problem is, is you're thinking maybe four.
Yes.
Which would be. No advance in steps shall be automatic upon completion of the period, it doesn't get away from the things that are required in order to, to. Go to, to next steps, it just means that we're not going to add additional criteria on, on top of it, so. As an example, you'd still, in order to be eligible for a step, you have to get a satisfactory review typically and things of that nature. So anything that's with, within, within the prerequisites that are within two, still apply by virtue of four, we're just not adding any ones on top of that other than. This eight years of service of which some of that timeframe has to have been with the city. So, so it would preclude outside of the city council waiving it. And that had to be done through contract. Well, I guess it could, never mind, it could be done through resolution, you got me thinking now on my feet, but. It would, it would require somebody, you, you wouldn't just be able to hire somebody and then automatically hire them at step F because of. The pay that you want to pay them, in, in other words, they would have to have a certain amount of time with the city. And they would have to have, you know, satisfactory reviews and things of that nature. Does that make sense, does that answer your question or does it?
Kind of, I still think it's a little bit ambiguous, but.
I mean, we can. We can clarify if, if, if you would like to say, subject to all of the, you know, it's a. So it says, no advance in steps shall be automatic upon completion of the period of service outlined here and above, see, that's the reference up to two, right? And all shall increase, and, and all increases shall be made, one on the basis of merit as established by the employee's work performance, so that's your satisfactory review.
Right.
And upon documentation by evaluation, so there's again, further evaluation, upon reviewing approval of the city administrator and increasing the pay shall be withheld. For inferior work in different attitude or any other sufficient reason, so. No other condition will be necessary, so it, it doesn't, two D doesn't take those requirements away. If you want to, you could put in F, you know, it's, you know. Except as set forth below, right, and four, no other conditions will be necessary for members of SMEA to achieve the. The six, six step, so I don't think you'd get any. I don't think that there's going to be any objection to somebody not having a satisfactory evaluation and then moving into. So, so yeah, so that's, so I, I think if that makes you feel more comfortable, we could insert that language.
I don't know.
Because it would just gives it a cross reference?
I'm not a, you know, I'm not legal counsel, I, I just. You know, if I, as an employee would read that and think that I could just go to step F as soon as the time rises.
Make a comment, that was addressing originally the F step required. Community service and or service outside of the normal hours worked here. And that was to address that.
Right. But, but that, that, that still doesn't make it unclear to me.
So, so I, I think that to, to clarify it. We can say except as at, as outlined here and below. Comma, no other condition will be necessary for members of SMEA to achieve the sixth step, right? So that pulls in your number four. Merit work performance evaluation.
Right.
Kind of, which I think is, is the main purpose of your comment, so.
Right, it is.
So I, I, I think that that's, I don't see any objection to that. No, we'll make sure there's, we'll make sure there's objections to it.
I'll ask a question now because there's no None of us have received an evaluation since
Yeah.
we've borked here. So, um, having a, an increase based on merit for the F step, for those that have not had it, is not going to work. So the language was, um, put in there basically stating that it would be a additional sixth step. And if there was not a negative evaluation, because we've not had an evaluation, that those that were eligible would be eligible based on the criteria of either having a, a positive evaluation or having three years minimum with the city and five years of other government for a total of eight in management.
Here's what I'm going to suggest, let's go through your questions.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Garavenna?
And before you start, because this is right on the same line, because I noticed on two C then, when you started, when you start, when you went to this example. So it says, must, employee must have worked three years with the city of Sonora and a minimum of five years with another government and tribal agency for a total of eight years' experience. So, reading that means that they can only have an F step if they've worked for another organization for five years?
That's a, the C the org, so that's the, so you have to have eight years total experience.
Right.
But at least three of them have to be with the, um, city of Sonora and then the other ones can be with another government agency, but it couldn't be, for instance, uh, with a private agency. So think about like a security guard or something like that, wouldn't, that wouldn't
No, I, I get that, but I, it, it's just must work three years with the city and a minimum of five.
Or.
Doesn't, where's the or?
Doesn't say or, it says and.
Oh, I see what you're saying. That should be an or.
Yeah, that, that needs to be fixed because I, you know.
That's all.
Yeah. Because I, if they worked eight years here, they've worked eight years here, should get the, yeah.
Right. Instead of requiring five years outside somewhere.
Yeah. Any?
I just have a, a couple of clarifications. These are silly, but on page nine of the MOU, I don't know what page it is in the packet, but, number two A, root, and this is dental insurance. And this is, I'm just curious, routine, routine paid at eighty percent of UCR? What's UCR?
University, universal compensation rate or something?
That sounds right, okay. Um, I think
That's pretty standard.
And I just didn't know what it's, I just didn't know what it stood for. I think that that, I think I have one more flag, but I think, no, that's it. Sorry, thank you.
Does anybody have any other? Actually, let's, can we, can we go through public comment and then that way if anybody has any language changes?
Absolutely.
Then, then we have got that, then I can, we'll take a five minute break and I can confer with the management group and then.
And then after public comment, I've got a question, it's something that was said, just kind of floored me, but we'll, we'll, we get public comment first, so. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, any over Zoom? I see none. Okay, so it's coming back to the council. Am I under the correct understanding that, uh, no one's had a review in
Yeah, that, that's
a couple of years? I, I'm a little floored by that, so.
I was gonna
So I, I don't want to get into that publicly, just because that's HR, so I don't want to get into that publicly. So, we can have a closed session.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was said, it was said publicly, that's why I was asking a question, but I don't want to do anything we shouldn't. I just, I want to make sure the public knows that it will be addressed, so.
So, so just, just for the record, that's, uh, the mayor, mayor's question's well taken. It's just not something that we're eligible to talk about or, uh, in public.
Okay, so were there any other questions before we adjourn for five minutes? Yeah, adjourn for
Don't want to adjourn, want a break.
Okay, so we'll come back at six oh one or before. Okay, like to call the meeting back to order from the break. I apologize to the public, it took a little bit longer, but sometimes when we do things, legal things and other things we need to get done, it does take a little bit longer, so. Um, coming back to item number four, um, I think I'm going to defer to our city attorney.
Yeah, I think you may have had an opportunity to consult with the members of SMEA and, and we, uh, came up with some, um, language that I think, um, better clarifies, uh, number two D in particular and its relationship with number four on page five of the, um, agreement. Um, and so what I'd like to do is, uh, um, read how we would propose the language, uh, to go. So again, um, I'm going to re-read, reading changes only to, uh, two D, I don't think we need changes anyplace else. Uh, but it would read as follows, um, and I'll, I'll note where it's new language versus continued. So this would be new language, except as set forth below, comma, beginning in twenty twenty-three. And then we go to the old, the old language. No other condition will be necessary for members of SMEA to achieve, uh, the sixth step F, period. The new language, any employee who qualifies in twenty twenty-two for F step shall be deemed to have, uh, received satisfactory evaluations for the year twenty twenty-two, period. Uh, that would eliminate, uh, any kind of potential issues or conflicts, uh, with number four below, in my opinion. So, um, and they, and they've, um, accepted that language. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you, that you have. So, uh, if, so for instance, if an employee hasn't received an evaluation currently, uh, and they're eligible for the F step, they would be able, able to get that after this is, this is approved. Um, but if somebody, um, is, um, not eligible until twenty twenty-three, they would still have to get their, um, satisfactory evaluation in order to be able to move into step, um, F.
Did we fix the language on two C?
Oh, and, and then on, on, on two C.
Which is the three.
Yeah, on the two C, uh, which, it just needs to be, um, actually, I should have wrote that out beforehand. So, um, on, on, we just need to, to read that the employee must have worked at least, uh, eight years, uh, with another, with, with a government or tribal agency for a total of eight years' experience, three of which, uh, would need to be with the city of Sonora. So we basically completely got that one and just make it really a lot clearer. So you have to have total, so, um, to achieve sixth step F, the employee must have a total of eight years' experience with a government or tribal agency, at least three of which would have to be with the city of Sonora, period.
Okay.
Cool.
Yes.
Cool.
So, so, um, it would be our recommendation that you, um, accept it with those revisions. Um, and so that would need to be part of the motion and a second.
Yeah, so unless there's any other discussion.
Did we do public and all that already?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Then I will move on. Uh, move to adopt resolution zero two dash, zero seven dash, two thousand twenty-two dash A with the amendments, uh, just read by, uh, our attorney.
I second that.
She beat you, Mark.
Yes.
Okay, so motion by council member Garavenna and second by council member Such. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Passes five to zero.
Thank you to all parties.
Onto item number five, consideration to adopt resolution two, seven, twenty twenty-two B approving the employee salary schedules for the Sonora Management Employees Association as part of the twenty twenty-one memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, mayor and council. Um, this item is very similar to the last one, essentially it just memorializes our salaries, uh, table and schedule, uh, related to the employees in the MOU that was just approved. So, only necessary if you, with the five O approval, which just passed, so happy to answer any questions you have, but completely just related to memorializing the MOU that was just approved.
Looking for any council questions? Okay, so I'll look for any public comment, starting in the council chambers. None? Okay, and then I will ask for any on Zoom? None on Zoom? Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion by council member Garavenna, second by, uh, Mayor for Tim Plummer. Sorry, now I was thinking about something here. Before we do this vote, I, I just, I got to tell the, uh, the management employees, and this goes to every city employee. You know, I can't atone for some things that may have happened in the past and something was brought up earlier, but really and truly, all of you really are that much appreciated. This isn't an us against them type of thing. I mean, really, it's, the, the city of Sonora I've always seen as one kind of big dysfunctional family and we really do, I mean, I can, I can name off, I see y'all laughing, but it's the truth. I mean, we all really do work together. We've got a great little itty bitty city and I'm, I'm sorry for that, that one thing. I, I mean, really, I wish I would have known, but this council does care a lot about all the employees of the city and we just, we thank you so much for your service. I mean, every single one of you goes way above and beyond anything I think that any of us could ever ask. And we just, we really do appreciate you, so. I guess with that, I'll ask for, um, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Passes five to zero. Okay, on to item number six. Authorize the Sonora Fire Department to electronically submit the federal emergency management agency FEMA grant. Authorize the city administrator and/or fire chief to execute all documents related to grant applications and direct the fire chief to return to the city council with application results and to accept the awards. Chief New?
Yeah, uh, thank you, and, uh, apparently there was a mix-up on this. So this is for the prevention, but they're all coming out at the same time, so, um, I apologize for that typo and I think they'll all attach them, say we're not attached to this. So this would be allowing the fire department to submit for a FEMA grant for fire prevention activities along with, um, my fellow county supervisor over here with our vegetation ordinance. Um, as you know, the city's fire inspector position was eliminated back in two thousand and twelve and went to part-time and then you don't have any inspectors anymore. So, uh, this grant would allow us to go through that process to hire either seasonal or part-time inspectors to help with the space programs or vegetation ordinance and mandated, uh, required inspections in the city. Um, the cost right now is, uh, a five percent match of whatever funds are requested. That would come out of the, um, higher fund that we have, would not exceed that fund at all. So it's, right now, I'm in the process of writing the grant, I don't have the exact totals, but it would definitely be within that threshold and I'm not, I'm not like, uh, just asking permission to authorize submitting that grant. And again, the funds, uh, would be five percent now would come out of the
That'd be good.
But I'd be happy to answer any questions about that one. Our prevention.
Are there any questions? Give me to me. Yeah.
We get it. Yes. We can get, we'll thank. Thank you all, stay up.
Thank you. So between Jim and Mark, you usually have fire questions, that's why I look at both of you first. And Colette's got all the contract questions. So, okay, so I'll ask for any public comment.
State that, uh, you know, I support this, uh, and, and Chief New, you're quite correct. You know, if you put ordinances into place, you're working on revising them and doing things, they're not worth anything unless you're, you know, able to inspect and, you know, enforce what you're putting into place, so. Yeah, good luck and, uh, hopefully we'll find some too.
Cool, we're first.
Okay, anyone on the Zoom? I don't see anyone on the Zoom. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council. Any other discussion or motion in a second?
Well, boy, I was going to make a comment first and, you know, I mean, those of us who, those of us who aren't paperwork people have to really appreciate all of the work that goes into these grant writing efforts and the, the time and energy and dedication it takes, and I want to say thank you for that too, because it's, I mean, it's not free money since it takes a lot of your time, but it sure is helpful to the city. And, uh, I, we appreciate it enormously.
Four, four fifths of a, a fire rig, isn't it? A third engineer through safer grants. Various types of equipment that, you know, we have. Scuba or SCBA's. Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, it's, without these, without grant writing, we'd be, um, a bit of a hurt, so.
Yeah.
It's
You see what I meant? Both y'all were going to say something about this particular one, so. Okay, anyone else?
Just appreciate that she, and that our fire chief is on top of the grant.
The, uh, you know, of the grant, uh, availability and that she is, um, as Mark said, uh, you know, so energetic about pursuing them and, and, uh, we do need inspectors, so that would be terrific.
Okay, so I guess looking for a motion, second?
As long as I have the microphone on, I'll move to authorize the tricky. The Sonora Fire Department to electronically submit, uh, federal emergency. Now, is this where the prevention goes in?
Correct.
Agency grant, uh, authorizing the city administrator and/or the fire chief to execute all documents relating to the grant applications and direct the fire chief to return to the city council with the application results and accept the awards.
Second.
Uh, motion by council member Segastrom, second by council member Garaventa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so item number seven, we already discussed. So next is council member department head reports. So I will start with Chief New, nothing?
Yeah.
I was, I was waiting.
Okay.
First off, I just wanted to say, um, last week, we tragically lost one of our fellow firefighters in Stockton, California, when he responded to a debris, uh, burn and, um, was making entry into a building and was shot and killed. And so, um, we just want to acknowledge, uh, his funeral services are tomorrow. We have several members from the county going down to participate in the ceremony and the procession. Also, I would like to say that, uh, the, I'm going to get this grant incorrect, but the community resiliency grant that the county had put out, and there was over four hundred applications, I believe, supervisor, uh, the city of Sonora, Fire Department, I put on, in on behalf of the Toomey County Fire Chiefs Association for a new bench tester, which is a OSHA-required, um, piece of equipment that will help test the actual SCBA's that we wear, the self-contained breathing apparatus, and we were awarded that grant for, uh, nineteen thousand dollars. So, uh, finishing my bachelor's degree was one of the best things I could have ever done because my grant writing skills have definitely improved and, and, uh, and using our joint efforts in the Toomey County Chiefs Association, we are moving forward with, with grant opportunities as well. So it's going to benefit not only the city of Sonora, but all the other fire agencies in the county on testing their equipment. So, thank you, I totally have to say.
Thank you. Since Chief Vanderwill's here, nothing from our lieutenant? Okay. Mr. Gorski? Okay. Rochelle?
Sorry. Um, so I know most of you have not met him, but we do have a contract planner that has really been here about a month now, he's just kind of getting his feet under him and we're working on two things. One is our update to the ADU ordinance and the other is to redo the city's, uh, sign ordinance. Um, basically throw it out with the bath water and start over because our sign ordinance needs a lot of work. And I pledged before I retired that I wanted to take this on and fix it, so to the best of our ability. So, um, our sign ordinance aren't going to make everybody happy, but what we're working on is things to make things easier and better for both staff and the businesses under that ordinance. So, our draft is, we're working through the draft, um, we're planning on taking it as, as a discussion item to the planning commission in March. So watch for that, um, and you guys can look at it, it'll, it'll actually come to you guys for full adoption of the ordinance, but, um, we wanted to start with the planning commission because they are the enforcement mechanism. mechanism, and we just wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity to provide any input. It is a full rewrite, so we want to make sure that a lot of people have good ideas and that there can be things out there that we hadn't thought of. So we're working through that. It is sometimes a death sentence to staff, but hey, I'm on my way out anyway, anyway. So I'm a good person to take it on, but, and then also on the A D U, we're working through that to make it comply with what the state requirements and also looking at the needs of the city. Getting cars off the streets, a big deal. We are a high fire hazard zone, and we want to make sure that, we have to make sure we address that as best the state will allow us, as we add more units in these rural, in the areas with our little narrow streets. So we're working through that, they'll both go as a discussion item to this Planning Commission, and then they'll come back for adoption and moving forward, so. I want to let you know that that is moving along, and, and we're getting some things off our checklist.
Thank you. Okay, um, city attorney.
Nothing more tonight than, other than we'll just kind of continue to keep you up to date as the state shifts from a pandemic to endemic type of strategy. Just for the public, always know that, you know, it's not just the state regulations that we have to follow, we have to continue to follow what our insurers require, and so our, our situation as employers is a little bit more complicated, but I, I think that I do expect that everything will work kind of lockstep, but we'll continue to give you updates and things of that nature as it, as it, as it changes.
Interim city administrator.
All right, thank you. I just want to recognize staff over the past week. I'd like to thank Chris, while I was out, I attended the League of California Cities Conference, and Chris stepped forward, and I'm grateful to him for the development of this agenda and making sure that we were all prepared for this meeting tonight, so thank you very much, Chris, for all the work that went into that, specifically the employee management MOU and the salary schedule as well. And then I'd also like to recognize the work that Chief New is doing with the county and her coordination with County O E S and Cal O E S in our fire recovery efforts and property damage cleanup, and I would also like to extend my thanks to our county supervisor who is here, if you can share with your staff that we are grateful for that level of coordination. It appears we are unified in our response to that fire, and we remain unified in the recovery, so I am grateful for the coordination of our chief and county staff as well. So that is all that I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Segastrom.
Okay, this, these past two weeks, I attended the Central Sierra Economic Development District Meeting. They're in the process of putting together a comprehensive, SEDS, a comprehensive economic development survey, and they have contracted with a group out of Chico, but I, I was talking with Melissa about this, I'd really like to have someone from city staff also be on that or be assigned to that committee. I do not know a lot about economic development, and I, not to discount our county economic development officer, but I feel like Sonora and Angels Camp are really underrepresented, and, you know, I, I did send a note to Cole and said, don't forget Sonora, but it would be, I think, really more effective if someone from the city was on the, on the board with me, because it's, you know, you'd like to know everything about everything, but economic development is not one of my fortes, and they, they have a lot of grants and things that they're doing, and I would really appreciate that support. Let's see, I think that was, I then I did the N I D I S climate overview, which, considering that they projected a fifty-fifty chance that it could be a drought year versus a rainfall year, right now it's looking like the fifty-fifty is going toward drought, and, but these, these updates are available every month, if anybody wants me to send the link, and I think that that is it for right now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garavenna.
Don't have anything to report, actually. I didn't, there wasn't any meetings in the last two weeks, so, that I can recall, anyway. I will say that the, so I'm assigned to the Solid Waste Committee, that's being re-scheduled, it's usually this next, it's a week from this, or actually, no, it's this coming one, it would have been this coming Wednesday, but it will be rescheduled for the second of March. That's it, okay.
Councilmember Such.
Let me see, on the nineteenth, and I attended the Topeka County Commission on Homelessness Outdoor Shelter Ad Hoc Committee. I also attended that committee on the twenty-sixth. On the twentieth, I, I attended the Topeka County Commission on Homeless C D B G Grant for meeting for the navigation, just to look to, get a, an, sort of a, an assessment for a navigation center. On the twenty-first, I attended the Topeka County Commission on Homelessness Navigation Center Committee. That's why I, they, and those were all ad hoc committees, and that is why I suggested to Chief Vanderwill that perhaps he might not want to volunteer for any ad hoc committees, because there are, there are committees twice a week at least, and ad hocs, so. And I can't remember the date, but I went to the PIT training for the point in time count training, and our city administrator and I attended that, and we also tried to do a PIT count at the Heart Rock Cafe on the following Thursday, and no one was there, so we did, what? Well, except we were sent there, but anyhow, but yeah, I think perhaps that is why, I mean, there were, there were meals to go, there were going to be meals to go, but, and on Friday, I went to the, the laundromat in the Lower Save Mart and didn't do a very good job on the PIT count there, but I found it awkward for me. On the twenty-fourth was a social equity committee meeting, we, I also attended a social equity committee meeting on the thirty-first. We finished our common language table, and we'll next, at the next meeting, start working on finalizing the resolution. So that's moving along. On the twenty-fifth, I attended the Oversight Board of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sonora, and I actually wanted to talk to Rochelle about that during the break, because I never can really remember what that's about, but, and we finalized, we approved the budget for the next, till, through the next year, I think, and then I think that agency will, the money will be gone and the agency will close. Have I said that correctly? It'll dissolve. On the twenty-eighth, I attended ATCA's Internal Affairs Committee to, just, that's just a committee that meets periodically to approve policies, and on the second of February, I, I attended a Granicus webinar on short-term rentals and just how to optimize the management of that and the experience for the owners of the short-term rentals, as well as the experience for the city staff. And on the third, I attended another Granicus webinar on eighty, ADA requirements to ensure equitable, that they're equitable and inclusive, they, they bring equitable and inclusive engagement, just, you know, just sort of interesting stuff. Anyhow, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just want to say one more thing, and I just want to, there was a, a Proud, Proud Boy recruitment in Courthouse Park on Saturday, and I was downtown a lot on Saturday and Sunday, and I just want to report that there was a lot of angst that I heard from visitors to our town. One woman was, with whom I spoke, was visiting with her teenage daughter to celebrate her birthday, and they actually stayed in their hotel out of fear, and, and I don't think that there was any behavior necessarily from the Proud Boys that they were responding to, but I just, you know, she says she won't come back, and, and that was, no, she was not the only one who said that, so that is a sort of, just something that we all need to think about. That's it.
Thank you.
Nothing further this evening, thank you.
And I just want to thank everyone, like I said before about our management and our employees of the city, I thank you, and thank you for a good meeting, and we will close the meeting at six thirty-seven P M.